And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Call.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Temp Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt. Quorum is present.
Yep.
We now reconvene the committee as a whole, of the whole, to discuss the Controller's report and to discuss the Control Board's report. I want to start by saying, we do, you have received a rather lengthy report from the Control Board. They were invited to come to this meeting. They sent an email that has been filed with the council that basically said that they, when they could not come because of a meeting that they are having, and mentioned a meeting they are having tomorrow. I want to express my disappointment in the fact that we need all of the hands on deck. This city, the city's budget is very important, and when you have a control board, even though it's a soft control board, that is receiving at least, or close to a million dollars, I believe, to operate, but never, never, since I, that I can remember, has appeared before this council, but has given written reports that, that there are questions about the written reports. However, the Control Board, which has a full-time, a full-time employee, does not send anyone. So my question is, why do we still have them? Why are they still there? Why are they still eating off of the city's and state's back? At the end of the day, this board has failed to appear every time that I believe, that I remember. And if it, if they did, it was so few times that we haven't heard from them. And their opinion does matter, and by, by their establishment, they're supposed to weigh in. Last year, we didn't receive anything, at least not on time. This year, we did after requesting it. But we do have before us our Deputy Controller. They have weighed in. You have received their report. And so I will go to Deputy Controller for any statement that he has concerning their report that they sent to the council.
Good afternoon, your honorable body. Along on the call, I have the City Accountant, Bill Ferguson, on the line, and also the City Cash and Debt Manager, Greg Samsky. As stated by Council President, we file the Controller's budget response to fiscal year 2021, 2022. If there's any questions from this group, we, we will address those questions now. But just a quick overview, for the most part, the budget, the recommended budget do appear to be factual in regards to when you compare budget to actuals to prior years to the current year, and primarily, when you look at like, sales tax, you look at state aid and other revenue line items, they do kind of, they fall in line with what we actually received in prior years. My primary concerns in regards to revenues, the first one is the stimulus money that the administration budgeted for next fiscal year, that 50.4 million. We need more information on which revenue lines related to COVID do we think we're going to use $50 million for, to cover in loss revenues. We also had a concern with the tribal compact. We understand there's been communications for the past three, four years in regards to selling it, but that's additional $11 million. That's included in this budget, but we, we do have questions on. And also, the real estate sales, we budgeted around 5.5 million. We need a list of properties, potential properties that we plan on selling to equate, to make up that five and a half million in anticipated revenues. From the expense side, for the most part, overtime, we have questions in regards to overtime. When you look at overtime, it seems like it's over budgeted, primarily for the past maybe three or four years. But one thing we also noted with the overtime is that unfilled positions, that budget amount were covered under each, in overtime, because those two kind of like offset against each other. And then also in judgment and claims, it seemed like that amount is under budgeted year over year. But we also understand that it's, it's kind of hard to determine what we're going to pay out in judgment claims. But if you look at prior year actuals and what we paid out, we think that budget amount should be closest possible to the actuals. So primarily, our response is based on actual revenues and appropriations from prior years, and then looking at what the recommended budget amount is for fiscal year 21, 2022. And with that being said, if this group have any questions for myself, Greg, or Bill, we'll be more than happy to respond and answer.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Deputy, I'm a little concerned that this was not filed in a timely fashion to be viewed by the public. That's number one. I know that you had told us that we were going to get it, and we didn't. It was emailed to us, and we weren't able to discuss it during finance. That's one issue I hope that you can address.
Can I address?
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The reason why it was filed a day late is because the Controller was under the weather on the 10th. We made changes, so Controller needed to review the report prior to what's following with the council. So this group received it one day after. We have, we don't, we're not happy about missing it for one day, but I'm pretty sure that's probably the first time, whatever period of time, that this report has been filed a day late.
Yeah, but it's just that the public can't weigh in, the public can't see it, and then the budget will be approved by the time. But, okay, so I understand that. Number two, I think what you've written is spot on to our understanding and concerns. And, you know, I think we need some further clarification. I think we've asked during this whole budget cycle, even prior to that, how will the 50 million be spent? Will we be able to get the 50 million? Because it said for COVID-related expenditures. And as you stated, over the last several months, pretty much, we've been almost in line with our revenues. And you said during our last meeting for real property tax, we've collected 97% of the real property tax, which again, is astonishing to me, because I thought we probably would, could have been able to make up that rev, that difference based on that. But seeing that those numbers are all very close to what we anticipate, I don't know how we are able to get the 50 million. And we keep our being told that we will get it, we will get it. Have we got it as of yet? The 50 million?
Well, the 50 million, that's for stimulus money for next budget year. Where, if anything, where the stimulus money that we receive for this current budget year is what we're kind of working on now, and see where will we finish at, if we need to draw against any of the current year stimulus money. This 50 million that we're speaking of now is what the administration anticipate in losses due to COVID for next fiscal year.
Right. But I'm saying, I thought we were supposed to be, get a tranche of money this month. Is that not true?
Well, we haven't received a funding yet. Administration has to apply for the funding. And when they apply for the funding, I believe from the legislation that we read, the city will receive that money quickly, once that request is approved by the US Department of Treasury.
But to, to, from your understanding, to get that request, we have to show that we have $50 million in losses, correct?
Remember, not, yes. For next fiscal year, we would have to show that we have $50 million in losses related to COVID-19.
Why is that next fiscal year, when COVID was during 2020, 2021, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021?
Still in fiscal year 2020, 2021. So we haven't even closed the year out. So remember, in this current year budget, administration budget $65 million in COVID-related losses. So we have to work with that first. So the administration did put a request in, to my knowledge, to say, here's the losses that the city of Buffalo have incurred in this current fiscal year. But this 50 million is the next fiscal year.
And then, you know, so again, you guys were right on point. I brought up the issue regarding the tribal money. We're told this is her last ditch effort. We've been told that all along. So again, and I shared a conversation that I asked, that, you know, when we do a budget, we don't typically do it on speculated income. It's truly on income that you can anticipate getting. That speculation, 11 million, and actually, we should be getting more than that, from what I understand. If, if, if it's, if we're saying that we're going to get what we're, what's past due old to us, maybe not what's currently billed to us, but it should be somewhere around 35 million. So that's something that we're going to be targeting. But again, we don't know until there's a final decision from the court. Last thing is, again, the, the report to me was spot on. However, the conclusion, I'm a little bit baffled by it. Because when you go through this report, it's kind of concerns, but then the conclusion doesn't speak to that. Can you speak to what the, why the conclusion came up with something that was totally different from the narrative of what we read?
Conclusion regards.
From the report.
Understand that. But I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the right. Yeah, remember, this conclusion is, is, it's a lot of pandemic related. We're looking at this, we're looking at this budget. What we're saying, when we analyze the budget, the budget numbers max up, match up to what was actually received in prior years, not matching up to what was budgeted in prior years, but was actually received in prior. Now, when you look at the conclusion, is, like I said, is really, no one know where we're going to go in regards to this pandemic. We hope we're on the right turn. But it's hard for us to draw a true analysis or conclusion of what's going to happen. As stated in the past, we'll continue to look at the numbers, provide data to this, the common council, BFSA taxpayers and citizens. It's based off the information we have at this point in time, and what we've actually received, or drawn in revenues and appropriations over the past years.
Yeah. I mean, I hear what you're saying. And again, from what the narrative says, it speaks us the truth. It's where we are. It's, we're not totally clear on our path forward. But the conclusion just seems to kind of flower it up a little bit, as if that what we read was not what we read. You know, but I think the, the regulators and everyone have, you know, had some level of concerns. And the fact is, if we don't get the 50 million, if that's not something that is reconciled, that they approve, then what do we do? What is the next step?
Well, as the Controller stated in her report, that $50 million, the $11 million from, from the Cenica's, the 5.5 million seller real estate, that's almost like 66, 67 million dollars of a budget, that's 534 million. As we've stated, as the Controller stated in the report, the administration have to have a plan, if you're not allowed to build for that additional 50 million. Administration has to have a plan, along with the common council, has to have a plan to recover that 11 million dollars. Administration and common council also have a plan to recover the 5.5. We don't receive that and sell the properties. So it's not where we're going back and forth. We're saying, based off this recommended budget, it appears to be good, but Buffalo is not out of the waters in regards to relying on one-time revenues, or relying on stimulus, or advanced payments to cover his budget shortfall.
Well, I'm not going to put it on the common council as much, because the common council disposed, and we didn't write up this budget. This budget was given to us. And all the things that we've asked for over the last couple of years, we've questioned various budget lines. And we're told throughout this whole process that this is going to happen, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. And it's almost as if we're, we're living in a fantasy world, that maybe we're, we have a different opinion, or a different viewpoint of where we're going. But they seem to be clear-eyed on it. But it just seems as though that never comes to fruition. So again, I'm going to say that we were requesting from the administration more detail in what they know, because they're meeting with their federal elected officials, we're not. And, you know, they're getting all the information and not really funneling to us until the last minute, or when it's need to know. So again, here we are, on a, with a budget that we questioned last year, 65 million, and now we're questioning 50 million. Even though we're told we're going to get 350, how do you reconcile it if it's truly for COVID-related expenses? We have not seen where we have $50 million in losses related to COVID. So I'm going to leave it there, and let my colleagues join in the conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Deputy Controller, there was a list of items that you said you needed more information on. Has that information been requested of the administration? And is that expected to come before this council has to decide on a budget?
That's our knowledge. We submitted the Controller's response. I believe it should be a public document now. So I'm pretty sure the administration will review the Controller's response. And once they read it, if they supply the information, hopefully, a decision can be made. But based off the Controller and her team review of the budget, those are the primary concerns that we had in regards to the stimulus funding for next year, the 11 million for tribal compact, and then also to sell a property.
Yeah, I think that if the Controller, if your office wants it, that, and we're all separate branches, so I get it. But it's important to the council that we really understand where the Controller is. So I want to thank you for the report. But if there are things that have been asked, you know, we're, we're, I'm right now planning on calling a meeting for Thursday. Of course, we have until Friday. I'd, I'd like to settle this budget by Thursday. But if the Controller is saying that they don't, the Controller's office is saying that they're waiting on information, it makes it a little difficult. Because my fear is, we decide this budget, and then something happens, and it's like, well, we said it, we, there was a red flag. So we kind of need the information that you are saying you need. There was a list, we can go back and get it. Council Chief of Staff, if you can make sure somebody goes back and gets the list that the Deputy Controller laid out before us, because I just think that we're at a crossroads, where we're about to decide a budget on a few things that we have no idea whether will come. We don't know if the compact will be delayed. But this council, and I agree with Councilmember Wyatt on this, this council has asked for a plan now for two years, and especially over the last year. We're, we stand ready to do that. However, we're not the administration. So we don't have that inside information of, for instance, what jobs could, could be eliminated if they have to. But we stand ready now, this, we're one branch of government. Now, the Controller's office is saying the same thing. I think that this is of utmost importance. Councilmembers? Anyone else? Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. You mentioned that on the expense side, that the city over budgeted money for overtime. What line are you referring to?
I stated we under budget for overtime.
Were we under budget for overtime?
Based off prior year actuals.
Okay. We're under budgeted for overtime. I thought you, my mistake, I thought I heard you say we're over budgeted over time. All right. And on the, this year's budget, to close the gap, we're relying on $65 million of stimulus money?
Well, based off our analysis, third quarter GAAP report, which we will file with this council by Thursday, 2:00 PM, we're projecting like a $17 million loss. And we're not including the 11 million in tribal compact, nor, so that's around probably, what, 6 million possibly in losses. But that's not including any stimulus money either. And we'll have a detailed analysis of our third quarter GAAP response.
It's hard to budget when we're billing for things we don't know we were, we could bill for. So we're basically preparing a budget, and we're billing for things that we're not sure we can bill for. And that's the unfortunate part of this budget. The tone and the attitude is, we're going to get it. So this common council goes along with it, that we're going to be able to do this. Although we've been asking for, as the Council President mentioned, years now, we've been asking for this information, and we still do not have it, whether or not we're able to bill for this. And if we are, we haven't been told what we're able to bill for. So that's this year. And then in the out year, next year, $50.4 million. So, you know, when I look at those numbers, my thought is, we should be looking at cuts and freezing and all kinds of measures that we should have been doing a while back, because that's not sustainable. I mean, at some point, we're not going to be able to depend on stimulus money in the out years. And yet, we're building and we're adding positions, and our budget is going to grow. And at some point, there's going to be drastic cuts. I thought, based on the tone that we're hearing, and sometimes, unfortunately, for this common council, we're listening carefully to the administration. It's optimistic point of view that the money will probably be there, that perhaps it'd be less restricted, we'll be able to use the money. But I'd rather side on the side of caution, and say, we, we have to prepare for what we have right now, that what we know for sure, as Councilmember Rashid Wyatt, not on just projections, and hope that we're going to be able to use this money. So I have concerns with this budget currently, this end of this budget, and not only this year, close out this year, but next year. I'm even more concerned about it, because I really don't know if we're going to be using, or we're going to be able to use that stimulus money. I can see COVID-related expenses now in this current year, because we've gone through it. But in the out years, how can we say, hey, this is COVID-related?
Understood. I mean, there's guidelines that the US Department of Treasury put out in regards to what's allowable and unallowable to, for these funds to be used on. And to my knowledge, you won't receive the funds prior to you submitting the plan to the Treasury saying what losses you incur, you incur. And then once they approve it, then payment will be submitted. So we won't receive payment until we show those, those particular losses due to COVID.
Well, as I mentioned, my, my thought process is, we should be looking on the conservative side in terms of freezing things, until we know for sure that, that it's going to be less restricted than what we think, and we're able to bill for things with all certainty. Because right now, I don't know if we can bill for those things. So I have a concern regarding this whole budget process, and how it's playing out right now. I don't know what's going to happen in the out years, but it doesn't look promising right now.
I'll be right to you, Councilmember Wingo. The, you talked about the guidelines that were already out. Do you have, does anybody else have a copy of those guidelines? Deputy Controller?
Oh, sorry, I thought you talked to your group. Yes. We do have the guidelines and legislation. I can forward it over to Council Chief of Staff after this call.
That would be most helpful, because I, I know I haven't seen any, so that would, that would help. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a quick question. This is the Controller's review of the budget, and we're short. So what are we willing to cut? And what are the recommendations? Because clearly, if we're going to be short, then something needs to be cut. We don't have the revenue to match the expenses, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is there, are there, are there any suggestions from anyone, anywhere on what could or should be cut, since we're talking about freezing and cutting, and not anticipating certain revenue streams that are in the budget?
From a Controller's perspective, we don't have that, right? We can provide guidance and give, provide data. But I think that would be more up to other two bodies of government.
Okay, so you do, you did say that you could recommend? Or I know that it's up to this council to cut the, the, the budget, seeing as the budget seems to be short. So are there any suggestions that this office can, can offer this body?
I mean, we, we could do an analysis. At the end of the day, we, our, our main focus is looking at budget to actual. As I stated in the past, we can budget all we want, but we want to look at the actual data. Even this recommended budget is based off what the anticipation is for revenues expenditures for fiscal year 21, 22, or for, yeah, for 21, 22. But that's part of what we do, and what this group do, and administration do, is to review the data throughout the actual year, and then make those decisions throughout the year. As I stated, the Controller's office is willing to provide any financial information to this group, administration, BFSA, taxpayers, or citizens.
And I think the, the question of what now, this, this council can obviously cut portions out of the budget. I, for one, am not one that wants to make the decision, because it's very difficult, if you're not, again, the administration and knows, know what can be cut. And that is, I think, the reason that for the last few years, the council has asked for, what is the scenario if the tribal compact does not come through? What is the scenario if the, the reserves, so, not the reserves, the stimulus money is not able to be used all the way? And so I've talked to, I want to talk to council members individually, but I think that we can sit here and go, this is this, this is this, but without any action, all, all we're doing is, is talking about it. And, and for me, the action should be that this council wants a plan before Friday. And whatever that plan is, is whatever it is. I know that some people are afraid to utilize the words layoff, or utilize the words cuts, or not filling a position. But I, in good conscience, don't know how we continue to go forward without, with the only thing that we are hearing is, there is a plan. Where is the plan? Now, we can write the plan. I want, I want to be clear. We can write the plan tomorrow. And if, if there's a majority that votes on it, this budget can be cut by $60 million. So I want to be clear that we have a hand in this. If there's a majority, that we can cut this budget by 60 million. I prefer not to. What I prefer is to have a plan so that we know, and I think that's what the Controller is saying, because I kept hearing, and I'm going to get the list, we need this, we need this from the administration, we need that. I think we have to be clear. I'll talk to individual council members, but I think we need a written plan. And it sounds to me, that's what the Controller's office is saying. Am I, am I overstepping Controller's office, or is that what you're saying?
No, I, I think at the end of the day, as the Controller stated in her response, we review the budget. We had a few concerns in regards to revenues and expenses. And then when we stand by that, we just needed additional information on those, on those revenue lines, and those appropriation lines.
So with the, with a quorum being present, and because we came to speak, so if there's someone against this, let me know. But I have every intention at the end of this call to reach out to the administration to ask for a plan, a, a plan. What, what happens if we don't get portions? If, I, I believe we will get some portions. I don't know about the compact. I don't know how long the courts can delay it, because what we were told last year is, it will be last year, and that there is no other steps that can be taken. Now, they're going to the federal government. We have no idea how long that's going to take, and where this is coming from. So I'm only one vote, but I think we need a plan, because we've heard from the Controller. I have no idea, this long report from, we're still going through it, from the Control Board, what, what their recommendation is. I think they just want to be out there and get the money, and not be responsible to this budget. Colleagues, anyone else?
Noakowski has been up for a while, Council President.
Councilmember Bowman, and then I'll come to Noakowski.
Thank you, Council President. I just, as far as the Controller's report, and some of the items that you mentioned, as far as a list of, of some things we'd like to see from the administration, I would like to see and ask for detail on this point of the sale of property and buildings. So we're budgeting $5.5 million. And here's what the Controller's report says. We need information from the administration regarding what properties the city plans on selling for fiscal year 21, 22. So that's something that I would like to ask for, to see which properties we're planning on this, you know, money coming in from. So that's important to me. And then I'd just like to ask Deputy Controller, to the point of the $25 million revenue deficiencies note, it's, I strongly encourage the administration and the council to pay off the $25 million revenue deficiency note, deficiency note prior to its maturity date of December 31st, 2021. Can you, Deputy Controller, let us know what you're signaling there, or what, what are you saying? So I know, obviously, you want us to pay, but are, are you saying that that money should be allocated, or should we be looking to use stimulus money? What's the suggestion at that point from the report?
We're, we're still going through the legislation, but if allowed, the, if the US Treasury allows to use stimulus money to pay off this debt, then we would like for the administration to make that a priority, to pay off that $25 million revenue deficiency note from last fiscal year.
Right. I think that's definitely something we keep our eye on, as far as what if, what if it's not, you know, what if, what if they don't? So I guess we have to have a plan. I would suggest we have a plan if, if it's not something that, you know, Treasury allows us to do. But those are a couple of points. But thank you for the report. It was very helpful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, I really, you know, you bring up really good points. And I just wanted to state this for the record, is, you know, the Controller issued a report, and we need responses from the administration to that report. And I don't And I don't want this to be a political, punting the political football of, well, if you're questioning certain revenues, then you gotta find the cuts. That's not how that works. We have a budget department that, that literally has a whole department that goes line by line to help advise the council on where to cut, because they are the ones that, that create this whole budget and then present it to this council. So I don't wanna have a repeat of last year where it's back and forth. This council needs answers to the issues that have been brought up in the controller's report so that we can deliberate effectively um, as a body when we're looking at this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Was there another hand up that I missed? Um, council members, I, I would just a- ask you to be uh, prepared that we may have to come back maybe once, maybe twice as a committee of the whole. We normally don't do this. Um, however, with the report that was sent to us and with the failure of the control board to appear, I think that there's going to have to definitely be some more deliberation to make some decisions. We will put in a request in the next five minutes uh, to the administration, next twenty minutes, I'm sorry, uh, with a request for information. Um, and if we have to come back together to discuss that with the administration, we can. And I wanna be clear, and I agree with Councilmember Noakowski, this isn't, this isn't political and it's not somebody going against somebody else. It's our job and part of what, one of the biggest parts of, of the legislative body is the budget. And uh, so this time, we have to dig in deeper because we have no idea what some of these federal revenues will allow, and, and so we know we have until Friday. If we have to burn the midnight oil, we have to do what we have to do. Uh, but I, I will not hesitate to bring back the committee of the whole. Um, either when we receive that information or the failure to receive that information, because and then we're gonna have to get around the table um, and figure out what do we do, and we must make a decision. All right, anything else? If not, um, moved by the majority leader uh, to recess, committee of the whole until uh, we are called back to meet again on the mayor's budget. Seconded by Councilmember Wingo. Did you have a question, Councilmember Wingo?
Oh, before you made that motion, I wanted to just ask before um, Brian and Mitch spoke, if it was before Councilmember Bowman and Councilmember Noakowski spoke, uh, were you making a motion for us to make an appeal to some different branch of government to do something? I don't know if that was what you were trying to do.
No, I was just stating what I, i- in case there was uh, council members who did not want that information or felt that they had enough information. So I just wanted to be clear of what uh, our next move would be as council. All right, so it's seconded by Councilmember Wingo, we're in recess of the committee of the whole.